I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We need to start with a roll call? Mr. Schmitt, will you help us with that? Yes, so Councilman Land has been excused for tonight and we have a quorum. Excellent. Thank you very much. We have an agenda before us. We do need to consider in addition to that agenda Resolution 2553 regarding a grant application. Is that sufficient for now? So if we, with that addition, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor, with that addition.
Mr. Welling with the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Schmidt seconding. Thank you. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have the council minutes for August 5th and the work session minutes for August 12th. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and we'll go on to the bills. Does that register with today's date on it? Questions? Concerns? Offers to pay our bills for a month? Whatever it might be. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I make a motion. We approve the bills.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Motion is there? Mr. Welling seconding. Mr. Sellers making the motion. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. Thank you. Council comments. Mr. Schmidt, what's on your mind tonight, sir?
It's pretty blank this evening, Your Honor. Thank you. I don't have anything.
That's okay. That's okay. I'm not going to judge. Mr. Perks.
Just a reminder, school's starting next Monday, so watch out for kids.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Mr. Welling.
Just heartfelt condolences to the Tremonton and Garland area laws, to officers, to a horrible incident and think of our law enforcement and all they do for us. We appreciate them, so that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Sellers.
And I echo Councilman Welling. I read the article about that and, you know, I see a lot of our officers in the community and want to make sure that they're as safe as they can be, so I appreciate what they do.
Mr. Heggeman.
Just get out there and enjoy the rest of summer. It's been beautiful and even though our Uintas are on fire at the moment, get out there and enjoy and, as always, keep our service members in mind. Everything that we have, we owe to them, so make, they went out of their way to give us the rights that we take for granted, so go out of your way to make their lives a little better now that they're home.
I will echo all of that and certainly express heartfelt, and it won't make it to there. It won't, it won't make it all the way to Tremonton and Garland Police Departments, what we say here tonight, it won't. But, you know, Tremonton and Garland are small towns, similar to us in size, which tells me that the likelihood is that these two officers, well, three, that were injured and the canine, but certainly the two that lost their lives, were known and most likely known well in their own community and from my perspective, I can only imagine. I take very serious the opportunity that I have on occasion to swear a new officer in and realize, to a small extent, the willingness, I guess, on the part of the officer to, to serve this community at all costs, if that's necessary. I don't take that lightly. And so I just, I don't know, have, I have no idea. There's no way to know how this, the communities of Tremonton and Garland are feeling. It has to be, I, I hope that we never have to experience, and I get is what I, is what I'm saying. So are my thoughts, personal, my thoughts and my prayers are with those communities and certainly with the families of those, of those officers, so I'll echo that. Thank you. We'll go to public hearings, special orders. We do have one appointment, first off, there to consider Justin Egbert's, who served, I'd like to bring his name forth, to serve on the Urban Renewal Board, a term for five years to end January 2031. That seems like a long time down the road, but I guess it's not. If someone would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling? Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks seconding. Thank you. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you and thank you to Dustin for his willingness to help us there. We do have a series of public hearings, I guess, with regard to some liquor licenses. Mr. Harris, will you, I assume you're going to be our hearing officer?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mark Harris. I'm the Evanston City Attorney. I'll be acting as a hearing officer for these hearings. The purpose of the hearings is for the city council to receive evidence regarding, one, the transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license owned by APE Wyoming LLC, DBA Wyoming Horse Racing, to WHR DBA Gateway Liquors within the city of Evanston; two, the transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license owned by Joko LLC, DBA Queen City Saloon, to Echelon 22110 LLC, DBA Pony Express, within the city of Evanston; and, three, an application for a restaurant liquor license by Black &amp; Jones LLC, DBA Gigi's Coffee House, located at 927 Main Street, Suite 200, within the city of Evanston. The applications for licenses have been reviewed by the city clerk's office, the staff of the Wyoming Liquor Commission, and they have determined that the applications are complete. Notice of the application has been published in a newspaper of local circulation once a week for two consecutive weeks and will be included in the record of these proceedings. Anyone present who wishes to speak to the council regarding the applications should approach the podium if physically present, state your name and mailing address, and present your testimony. No one will be cross-examined, but all of those who approach the podium and speak may be asked questions by members of the council. The issues in these hearings are set forth in Section 4-9 of the city code, which provides as follows: A license or permit shall not be issued, renewed, or transferred if the city council finds from evidence presented at the hearing, (1) the welfare of the people residing in the vicinity of the proposed license or permit premises shall be adversely and seriously affected; (2) the purpose of this chapter shall not be carried out by the issuance, renewal, or transfer of the license or permit; (3) the number, type, or location of existing licenses or permits meets the needs of the vicinity under consideration; (4) the desires of the residents of the city will not be met or satisfied by the issuance, renewal, or transfer of a license or permit; or (5) any reasonable restriction or standards which may imposed by the city council shall not be carried out by the issuance, renewal, or transfer of the license or permit. These hearings will be conducted in the following order: The transfer of ownership relating to WHR DBA Gateway Liquors will be the first hearing. After the testimony is concluded, that hearing will be closed and the matter considered for a vote. The second hearing is the transfer of ownership of, regarding Echelon 22110 LLC, DBA Pony Express. Once the testimony is concluded, the hearing will be closed and a vote considered on that application. And finally, the application for the restaurant liquor license by Black &amp; Jones, DBA Gigi's Coffee House at 927 Main Street, Suite 200, will be the third and final hearing, and after the evidence is presented, the hearing will be closed and the matter taken under consideration for a vote. So, the first matter up before the council is the transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license owned by APE Wyoming LLC, DBA Wyoming Horse Racing, to WHR DBA Gateway Liquors within the city of Evanston. Excuse me. Members of the council, this hearing and the next transfer hearing are kind of unique and unusual. Both of these properties are not operational within the definition of Evanston city code and Wyoming statute. They each requested an additional one year to establish occupational, or operational status, and they have now, in consultation with the Wyoming Liquor Division staff, the city clerk, and the applicants, have determined that the best course of action is to seek a transfer of ownership and location of the licenses, in one case, so that the licenses, if the transfer of ownership is approved, can then be on the council's agenda for renewal at the next council, at the meeting in September. I don't know which one. But if the transfers are not approved, these licenses cannot be renewed because they're not operational within the two-year period of time set forth, one for the normal one-year grant of operational status, and then the extensions, which were requested by both. So that's the status. So the, the opportunity to get the licenses renewed is to transfer them and then have the new owner become operational within the period of one year or an extended period. And that came about because of conversations with the applicants, the clerk, and the liquor division. So that's what we're here for. So the first one, and we have our witness appearing via video link, and I think he can hear us okay. Mr. Legore, would you please introduce yourself and go ahead and present your comments to the council?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Hi, I'm Pete Legore. I'm part owner and executive VP of Wyoming Horse Racing. As you know, we're building our gateway project just outside of town, and as part of that process, we secured a retail liquor license to offer liquor to our clients as well as run a liquor store. When we did that, we fully expected to be opened this September, and as Mr. Harris explained, our one-year extension brought us to somewhere around the middle of October. Once we determined that our, because of weather and other, other issues, the construction delays were going to push the opening to the end of this year, we realized that we were going to be outside the envelope of the expiration date of the current liquor license. We went to the liquor division, really tried to find a solution that would work with the existing rules and regulations, both the state level as well as the city, and in a collaborative effort, we came up with a solution of transferring the liquor license to a new entity that were, was created to hold this liquor license. And that's really what we're, we're doing here before you. Assuming the transfer of ownership is approved, it would actually allow for the renewal to occur for one year, but candidly, our goal is to have the property open by year end. So we really just missed the date issue for us is about a month and a half, unfortunately, because of the construction delay of the project. So the purpose of the license is to be used at the gateway project.
Thank you, Mr. Legore.
I'll be able to answer any questions.
Yeah. Any questions, why the council, for Mr. Legore?
I don't have any.
Is there anyone else present who would like to provide any testimony regarding this transfer? Is there anyone else who would like to testify? There are none. This hearing then will be closed. Mr. Mayor, the matter before you is a motion to approve the transfer.
Thank you. With that, I'll, I'll entertain such a motion to approve the transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license to WHR DBA Gateway Liquors.
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
I'll second.
I'll call that a motion, Mr. Sellers. We don't need an introduction here. We just need a motion. And Ms. Heggeman seconding? Is that what I heard?
Mm-hmm.
You both okay with that? A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I normally, you know, hate workarounds. I, I know the rules were there for a reason, but in this case, the building's half done and I know they didn't get it started as quick as they could, so I'm in favor of this one. I, but I don't like the workarounds. I really don't. But this, this is a good excuse on this one.
I think we've done those in the past, too.
The only thing I would ask is, obviously, you reviewed this, Mr. Harris, and we're within our legal limits of doing, changing the license, correct?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Schmidt. In fact, this was the only way that the liquor division identified, and in my discussions with one of the applicants, we thought there was another path, but the liquor commission said, "That's not a path we see." So doing what the liquor commission has said, this is the way you have to do this.
Thank you.
Further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Legore.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, city council. Appreciate the support.
The next hearing, Your Honor, is a hearing regarding the transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license from Joko LLC, DBA Queen City Saloon, to Echelon 22110th Street, 10th, excuse me, LLC, DBA Pony Express. This is the same issue with the non-operability within that period of time. Is there anyone present who wishes to testify concerning this application? Mr. Moxley coming up and state your name and mailing address for us, if you would, please, sir.
Sure. Joel Moxley, 22110th, Suite 303. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Thank you, Your Honor and councilmen and women. We are applying to have a transfer of this liquor license to Echelon 22110th, DBA Pony Express, and our focus on this building has been on the bank branch, and as that's, you know, successfully on track, we're excited about the potential of this and we're grateful for the consideration and thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Moxley?
I don't have any.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to testify concerning the application? Anyone else present? There are none. The hearing in this matter will be closed, and, Mr. Mayor, you have the ability to approve a motion.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of ownership of a retail liquor license to Echelon 22110th LLC, DBA Pony Express.
I'll make that a motion, Your Honor.
And I'll second it.
Sorry, Mr. Welling.
We're in stereo.
We're in stereo.
Mr. Perk's making the motion. Mr. Welling seconding. Discussion.
Just due to past history, I'm going to recuse myself because I feel it's in the best interest of clarity and the council and the public, just to make sure there's no improprieties or conflict of interest.
Appreciate that. Any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The final hearing is to receive public input regarding the application for a restaurant liquor license by Black &amp; Jones LLC, DBA Gigi's Coffee House, 927 Main Street, Suite 200, within the city of Evanston. This is a new application for a restaurant license, and Mayor and members of the council, remember, restaurant licenses are not limited in number by population, but do require food services, a component of the issuance of the license. So is there anyone present who wishes to testify regarding this application? Is there anyone present? There are no, no one present? Do any members of the council?
We have, we have one here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Sorry, I'm not sure.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That was a good question.
Yeah. Go ahead. And tell us who you are and state your mailing address, please.
My name is Gina Black. I'm part owner of Gigi's Coffee House, so thanks for having me here. We're just applying for this liquor license. We're having some evening events at the coffee house. That would be nice to serve limited things, and then on the weekends, things like maybe mimosas or Bloody Marys for brunches, and that's about it. It's not going to be a normal day-to-day thing, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
None?
No. Thank you, Ms. Black.
Yep.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to testify concerning this application? There are none. The hearing will be closed. Mr. Mayor, you now have a motion, well, potentially before you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'll entertain a motion to approve the application of a restaurant liquor license to Black &amp; Jones LLC, DBA Gigi's Coffee House.
I'll make that motion.
I'll take your second, if you want. I got a, I got a motion here.
Would you be seconding? Mr. Schmidt seconding. Mr. Welling with the motion. Discussion.
Discussion.
If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is approved, and thank you. We have no consent agenda, but we do have some unfinished business. We'll go there to ordinance 2506. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2506 is before the council on second reading. This is an ordinance of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, repealing Section 4-8B, the code of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, relating to limiting issuance of more than one liquor license or permit to any one person.
Excellent, and, and there has been no changes to the wording of the document since our first reading.
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2506 on second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sellers with the motion.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Perk seconding. I heard, I heard him over here first, Howard.
That's your good ear.
Perk seconding. He's right. Discussion.
I'm going to voice the same concerns that I had before, just because I think they need to be flushed out a little bit. I know this is in compliance with what the state already does, but that doesn't make it a good thing, and it doesn't necessarily make the language for the city good, because in essence, these 20 liquor licenses in existence are very rare and they're blue sky and they're hard to come by, but it also, it enables a monopolistic control over the liquor sales, and that is a little concerning for the average person coming in, and I'm looking right at Mr. Bateman, because I know he has a wealth of knowledge on the state aspect of that, and I know that it's in compliance, but is there any, I know I'm putting you on the spot, too, so I apologize, but you're here, so I just want to make sure that the language in this is so we don't end up having, you know, two people that own everything, that there's still a fair and equitable place for the citizens of Evanston that are moving in and are coming in, and I know you have a wealth of information, so you're on, buddy.
Please. Tell us your thoughts. I would like to hear it.
Cody Bateman, 219 Topon Strife. So I think to answer those questions, I think that tonight was a perfect example. Gateway Liquors will compete directly with border beverage, which is, is fine, and I think that competition drives, drives better prices and, and it's just part of our world and our economy.
Right, but this is addressing one entity, and I know you can go out in a matter of minutes, form another entity in Wyoming, but, you know, I just would like your opinion, and how do we keep this from one entity owning all of them, you know? Just, just make it a fairer playing field with such a, you know, retail liquor licenses are like Willy Wonka, golden tickets, you know? So it's, it really is luck and money and lots of it, and so that already narrows the playing field, and so I just want to make sure, and I know it's in compliance with the state, but the state isn't always the, the gold standard for stuff. How do we keep this so little guy can keep playing and have his dreams fulfilled, too?
Yeah, no, that's a valid question, but I think that you look at Wyoming's one of the 17 control states in the country, and outside of those control states, then it is fair game. And so you look, yeah, I mean, it kind of, the rules are built in at the state level for that, and you look at bigger communities with the Mavericks and multiple Walmarts or Smiths or grocery stores or things like that, and so I can, I can see the concern with that, but I think that there's enough diversity in, in these communities, that there is, is opportunity for that, and then as new licenses come up for, just through population growth and become available, then I think that allows for new entrance into it, into the, into the market, and so it, or the needs being met that Mr. Harris talked about earlier. And so I think that that gives the opportunity to where it's an application and the mayor and council get to pick, or the county commissioners get to decide who, who gets that and whose plan they like, and, you know, to your point, you don't want, these are, you know, it's an, it's an opportunity, but it's, it's also a big responsibility to have a liquor license. And so being able to have that, follow the rules and make sure that you're not, you're not serving minors, I know there's, you know, there's issues with that that we have and we've seen in this community and others, and I know that, that we're still fortunate enough in our market, if you get into, the last one that sold in Rock Springs was for $600,000, and so, you know, the concern is real, that, that can happen, and Jackson a million dollars to do that, and I think that, you know, a full retail liquor license, and I don't know if this addresses all liquor licenses, just retail, but the, the opportunity for bars and restaurants and, and allowing those type of licenses to be held in a restaurant. If someone has a restaurant, then, then they can get the bar and grill license or the brewery or those type of licenses.
Yeah, this one's just for the retail.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it's just a function of the market, like I said, in a control state, that, that these are creating the value and have the value that they do, and I do know that the, I also serve as a president of the Wyoming State Liquor Association.
That's why you're here.
And, okay, yeah, but anyways, the, the new licenses, the existing licenses will be grandfathered into having value and being able to be sold and transferred, but the, the legislation is aimed at going forward to, if a store decides they want to sell, then it's, it's just a transfer. There's no value given to the liquor license. So it is being worked on at the state level.
I just want to protect, you know, Evanston is a city that is so, the community is built on everybody having a fair shake.
Yeah.
And this is, you know, as long as it's, it's positioned right now where we're really separating, and the higher these goes, there's always someone with more money.
Yeah.
And they're, they can come in and suck these things up, and then you have, you know, an institution and 20 of the same things, so.
Yeah, you've got Walmarts, you've got Sam's Club in Casper that have them, and, I mean, it, it really just forces, forces the market. They, they do what they do, so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anything else? No. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion. There is no further discussion. All in favor of approving ordinance 2506 on second reading indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on second reading. Thank you.
Thank you for answering that. That made me a lot more comfortable. Cody?
Yeah, you're welcome. That was, that was intentional.
You were sitting here, and I'm going to ask.
You worked good off the cuff.
Good job.
We'll go to new business now, and we need to consider a motion to ratify execution of an incident-only commercial agreement with Uinta-Wasatch Cash National Force for the use of water on the Beulah Fire. Mr. Robinson?
Good evening, mayor and council. As you know, the fire in the Uintas, if you don't know about it, that's every morning we're reminded, maybe blanket of smoke in town. This fire started on August 7th, which is a Thursday, and then over that following weekend, I was contacted by our local fire department and US Forest Service for a need to help with some water, so we facilitated that for them over the weekend, and then they sent me an agreement on Monday, the 11th, to execute just an agreement for services so we could sell them the water. Because of the somewhat emergent need of that, I consulted with Mr. Harris and asked if we need to bring it here first, or if I should sign it so they can keep moving. He advised that we could, that I signed, and so I did. I signed it, returned it to the Forest Service so they could keep going. So our purpose tonight is just to ratify that. Hopefully you'll back me up after I give you some information. The water they're using is coming from two sources here in town. One is a hydrant meter, just fire hydrant with a meter on it, and down on Wasatch and Allegiance, and they're using that simply to fill a water truck to go up to the airport to water down the pad where all the helicopters are landing. With it being so dry, it's throwing dust and rocks, and that can really cause issues with helicopters, so they're just using that to wet down the pad. All of the helicopters on that fire are there for, they use our airport for maintenance and refueling and, and all of that, so we have to, they're in and out there all the time. So that is just to keep that pad wet down for them. The other place they're getting it is our bulk water station in Sunset Industrial. They have a contractor coming in several times a day hauling water from that to the fire site, and that water is potable water, and it's specific for the needs of the firefighters, washing, showering, bathroom, drinking, that kind of thing, so it's supporting them in their, their work up there. Other than that, we are not providing any firefighting water. They are not using anything from town for that. They're not using our Sulfur Creek Reservoir for firefighting water, so this is simply all we're using it for, is firefighter support here in town and to keep them in drinking water up there. There are 600 people up there, so they built their own little town, and now we're hauling water to them, so that is the purpose of this agreement, and we just are seeking ratification of our decision to, to sign it and let them keep going.
I guess one question that's going to be asked by the community is just to ensure, maybe you can, can shed some light, we are not, by doing this, we are not cutting ourselves short as a community, we're not going to be running short of water for our own needs here as a community in favor of this.
Since the, the weekend after, up to date, this morning, they have used 206,220 gallons of water.
Yeah.
That's barely a little bigger than the rec center swimming pool. That's the amount of water they've used in the last two weeks. So not a great amount of water. No, it won't affect the water that we have for our normal everyday use here in the city. There was an erroneous post about because the Beulah Fire, we can't irrigate the cemetery.
Yeah.
That was not correct.
Right.
We're not irrigating the cemetery as much anymore because the water master has shut down what can be used for irrigation coming from the river.
So the, the two of those issues are not connected?
Two areas are not connected. The river is low, but the reservoir's still at 80 percent. We are, as far as water usage from the reservoir, we're average for a year like this.
Sounds good.
I'm not concerned about, about that.
Excellent. Appreciate that information. I'll entertain a motion to ratify this agreement.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Sagamans, seconding? Any discussion?
Give them what they need. I mean, the, about, if, and put it in perspective, as somebody who's lived in fire zones, if you don't, that fire could be, we could be using the Sulfur Creek Reservoir to put out our own fire if that thing keeps coming our way, and with those mountain passes and those crevices that come down in our winds, it can very, very easily shift, and I've been witness to that before, and yeah, give them what they need.
We're doing so, and this agreement allows us to pay the price that the budget is established to. They'll pay that price for it, so.
And Mayor, you'll note, you'll note, Mr. Mayor in there, that there's a, there's a cap on it, not to exceed 10,000, so they want to change it, they'll have to come back and talk to Gordon.
I just looking at the 100,000 acre fire over by Thermopolis, and it's, it's pretty scary with, with, and that's just sagebrush, and that, when the winds kick upright, it gets pretty scary.
Did you have comment, Mr.?
I was just going, we, we're still monitoring, we monitored the water, though, in our reservoir and so on.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Anything they take is metered, and we know what they're taking and how much. Yeah, it's all good.
Do you foresee them going into the cap, and is there anything that we can do now so you don't have to wait and come back before us in two weeks if they need it?
For the amount they've used here, they're not even close yet.
Okay, so you got, they've got two weeks? You said 600 people?
Yeah, I, I don't see us getting anywhere near that 10,000, it's $10,000 cap, and we're a long ways from that.
Okay.
There's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Resolution 2549. Mr. Harris, read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2549 is a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming authorizing the execution of a cooperative agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation of the Bear River Bridge on Bear River Drive in the City of Evanston, Wyoming.
Mr. Newsom?
Good evening. This is an agreement provided by YDOT to start and initiate the design work for the bridge on the Bear River. It is something we've talked about during budget discussions, and in effort to do so, basically YDOT will design and go through all the environmental clearances for that bridge, and hopefully get it out to bid when there's a project in the vicinity, so.
Okay. It's got a clunk to it, the bridge?
I'm sorry?
You said it's got a clunk to it?
Yeah, it does.
It's got a little give to it. Hope it holds one more time when you count.
It, it does need some work, so.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding? Any discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2550. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2550 is a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat for the Navarro addition, a subdivision within the City of Evanston, Wyoming, as more particularly described herein.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes, let's see if I can advance here. There we go. The Navarro addition, it's a minor subdivision. It's located between Sixth Street and Seventh Street along the, I guess you can call it the north side of Main Street. It's highlighted here on the map. It does have two addressing, addresses currently 612 Main Street, 616 Main Street. As you can see, there is a, an existing house that's located at 616 Main, and the property at 612 Main Street is presently undeveloped. So the Navarro addition, actually, there is more than just the two lots that are showing there. The original plat, the original town of Evanston, shows that the combination of these two lots actually include a half of Lot 19, all of Lot 20 and 21, and the westerly half of Lot 22, and what is being proposed is to combine these lots into one lot. Property is presently zoned, low-density residential, established, and this zoning district, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. With the combining of these lots, it actually increases the size to 7,500 square feet, so it does comply with minimum lot size requirement. No easements are proposed with this subdivision. I'm going to move to the plat. That's a blow-up of the, the lot. There, there are no easements that are proposed. As I mentioned, utilities are located either in the alley or, or Main Street. City Subdivision Review Committee has reviewed this subdivision. It's fairly, fairly simple subdivision. There are no issues with the subdivision. There is, and in the recommendation, staff is recommending that it be approved, subject to some conditions. There is a, let me go back here. There are water and sewer services to Lot 612, so if that's not going to develop residentially, those services will need to be capped. So that's condition number one that I mentioned in the staff report. Condition number two would be verification that the final plat has been recorded with the county.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Jacobson? This seems pretty straightforward. You have more for us?
I don't have any more to add to that.
I'll entertain a introduction on this resolution.
I'll introduce it with a motion to pass, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, with the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding? This is your old stomping ground.
Yeah, it is. Used to be a house on that lot. When I was growing up, there was a house there. Then they tore it down, and then the lady that owned the house next to it bought the lot, now she's, she's passed away, now they're selling the empty lot.
And I imagine the purpose behind the combination, typically it's, they're looking to construct an accessory building on the lot, so.
That house they're living in is awfully small.
Yeah, it is a very small house.
Awfully small.
Further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Resolution 2551. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2551 is a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat of the Lawler subdivision, a subdivision located in Uinta County, Wyoming, and more particularly described herein.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson?
Okay, the Lawler subdivision, it's located on the southwestern, westerly side of the city, just beyond the corporate limits. As you can see on the aerial photograph here, the corporate limits are indicated by the orange dashed line. It's located just west of the city corporate limits, about, probably about 100 feet or so. It is located within a mile range of the city corporate limits, which requires joint review and approval by both the Board of County Commissioners and the City Council. What this subdivision proposes to do is from, from a much larger acreage, they propose to carve out two lots, as you can see on the plat, enlarge that, so Lot 1, Lot 2, block one of this subdivision. Lot 1 is .747 acres in size, Lot 2 is .857 acres in size. The city comprehensive plan does address some peripheral areas around the city as far as future land use, what, what anticipate those areas, land use occurring within those areas. This area is showing in the city comprehensive plan as rural residential. The minimum lot size for a rural residential property is a half acre and up to less than, just less than 10 acres in size. So these lots are adequately sized if and when city ever expands and, and these properties are annexed into the city. There are no city water and sewer services to this, these lots. Water is currently provided by the Lindley Mobile Home Park to one of the lots. Anyone purchasing these lots will need to look into extending water services to that lot. It'll be their responsibility. It is noted on the plat. I'll, I'll just read this real quick, a note that's included on the plat. So in the subdivider certificate, it states that the culinary water is provided by the Lindley Mobile Home Park. Lot 2 presently has a water service. The purchaser of Lot 1 will be responsible for the extending service to Lot 1, as I had mentioned. Does include a centralized sewage system is not proposed. It is noted on the plat that site conditions may prevent the use of conventional septic tank and leach-filled systems, so that, that could be limiting to what they do with that additional lot. Utilities are provided in the area, again, the lot that's undeveloped, that purchaser of Lot 1 would be, would need to be responsible for extending those services to that lot. There are some utility easements that are provided along the front. It varies in, in width from 20 to 25 feet along the street frontages, and you have a proposed irrigation utility easement along the east property boundary of Lot 1, and there is a 10-foot irrigation easement that comes in through an angle on Lot 2, as you can see in the upper northeast corner of Lot 2. Both of these lots have access to Yellow Creek Road, so there's no problem with access. As shown, city staff has reviewed this proposal and has expressed no concerns with approvals recommended for this.
Thank you. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers with the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sagamans, seconding? Any discussion?
Who owns the ranch land around that? It used to be all one big property, or they just subdividing that out from that?
Yeah, I believe, I believe it's the Lawlers own that. Let me pack it up here to an aerial. So yeah, all of that land from the corporate limits around that subdivision, that's, I believe is all part of the Lawler property.
And it's all agricultural, but I guess.
And then farther north is the carpenter place.
Yeah, I knew the couple that used, they were good people, yeah. They were good people.
There is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
Actually, I got a question.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Just something that I'm, I'm a little unclear on, because it's on the outside of the city limits, is there any possibility that it could shift infrastructure costs onto the city? Where, you know, the Lawler subdivision warns that a septic system may not be feasible, so are we in, is that something the taxpayer?
If, if they are looking to annex into the city and are wanting to connect to city water and sewer service, or mains?
I'm just asking.
They would need to extend those. It would be, it would be their cost to extend those.
It would be their cost?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess, where am I at with the vote? Did we? Did we, did we ever called for the vote yet? Have we voted on this? And then we had that question?
Yeah. I came in afterward.
Okay.
You beat me to it.
So that's approved, then? Is that, is that the way the minutes were gonna?
Leaning forward, it is.
Sorry, get my attention a little bit. I'm sorry about that. So that is approved. Resolution?
All affirmative votes.
Yeah, that's what I understood. Resolution 2552, Mr. Harris, read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2552 is a resolution approving and authorizing the final plat of the Bear River Vet subdivision, a subdivision located in Uenik County, Wyoming, and more particularly described herein.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson?
Again, this is a subdivision that's located within the county, so there is a joint review, both with the county and city council. It's located about .1 miles just north along Highway 89, just on the east side of Highway 89. It is a parcellized piece that's currently addressed, 1412 Highway 89 North. What is being proposed is a two-lot subdivision. And this is the plat. It's always nice to have a blow up, a little bit of splash of color. So on Lot, Lot 1, Block 1, it's 11.922 acres in size. Lot 2 is 2.000 acres in size. The comprehensive plan does show future land use for this area's highway business. There is a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. If and when that property may be annexed in, we'll look at land use, zoning, and that for the property. But these, these lots are adequately sized for any future land use of that property.
So they built, they built the new vet clinic out there. Is that on Lot 1, or is that on Lot, this? So they're, what I'm gathering, when I read it, looked at it, is they're kind of annexing that out, or I'm trying to figure out which way they are going with that.
Yeah, I, I believe the purpose for carving out a lot is, they're looking at, I believe, an additional building. And Mayor, you may know, have a little bit more information.
Let me, let me help you out here on the, on the Lot 1 is where the, the veterinary clinic is being constructed, and the, and the newer barn that is under construction. All of those are on the, are on the Lot 1. The Lot 2, they have anticipated an additional barn, more for their own use. But the reason for the subdivision is there was some financial considerations with regard to the construction of the new barn that facilitated the, the, facilitated the subdivision. I, I don't know that you can, you know, obviously they, these lots could be sold separate of each other. I don't know, I mean, obviously that could happen. I don't think that's the current plan, only the facilitation of their financing requirements.
They have built a great facility out there.
Excellent, excellent building.
It's a great addition for our community.
They gonna share an entrance, or are they gonna have their own entrances where they're next to each other?
There, there is a shared entrance. It's noted with the little blue.
Okay, 'cause that's a pretty busy highway there.
So yes, that is a private access easement, 60 feet by 100 feet, to provide access to Lot 2. So yes, both of these lots do have access to Highway 89 North. Let's see, again, there is no water and sewer service, city water and sewer service extended to these lots. The owners of these lots will be responsible for extending services to, well, it'd be likely Lot 2. I believe Lot 1 would already have sewer and water services to it, being that it's been developed.
Yeah, the, the water's going to be the North Uenik County Water and Sewer District, and then the sewer, the, will be a septic system that's DEQ approved directly on, on the, for the vet clinic and the barn that you see under construction. If, if an additional septic system is required for the Lot 2, that'll be administered, permitted through the, through the county.
So is this Lot 2, is that going to be commercial, or is that?
No, sir. There's no, no change in zoning.
Yeah, zoning doesn't apply beyond the corporate limits of the city. It does have a commercial use with, with the veterinary clinic, but.
There is, there is, there is county zoning here, but the, the use on it is appropriate in county zoning. It's a, it's an agricultural resource development zoning. It's a blanket zoning in the county. Anything that truly isn't residential, commercial, or industrial agricultural use is within that zoning designation, so.
There are other utilities that are located within the area, electric, natural gas. They do have land-based telephone lines that are either located along Highway 89 North or on adjacent properties. So they, they do have those utility services provided to, to these lots. Again, the cost of those services, if they're going to extend those into Lot 2, that will be the responsibility of, of the purchaser of Lot 2. Again, city staff has reviewed this subdivision and has no issues with that, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. I'll, Mr. introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce it with a motion to pass, Your Honor.
Perks with a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt, seconding? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll go on to Resolution 2553. Mr. Harris, read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2553 is a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the application for a grant award in the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security to obtain funds which are designated for law enforcement, terrorism prevention-oriented activities, and equipment.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council, it's our annual homeland security grant that we apply for. Typically, this grant is applied for in the springtime. However, with the administration change, everything got kind of put on hold. Typically, we receive the money about this time of year. This year, we're going to be asking for radios for the trucks. We have roughly 12 trucks in our inventory that currently have Motorola radios in them. However, Motorola has stopped supporting them for YOLink. So we have to replace the 12 radios with Kenwads that are now supported. So it's, it's a wonderful thing businesses do to us. They, you buy stuff that's compatible, and then they say, uh, no longer support it, so.
Electronic.
Roughly, the radios are running about 5,800 right now. My contractor has not, or vendor has not gotten back to me yet as far as the actual price tag for all of the radios, plus the install. But when I do get that, the grant closes at the end of September. I'll have the grant in before then if, if it's approved, and we'll ask for all that money. And the city doesn't have to show out anything. It's all state and federal money, so there's no match.
Radios are expensive.
Yes.
Excellent.
Gonna have to replace them sooner or later anyway.
Exactly.
Might as well let the government do it.
Yeah.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce Resolution 2553.
Is there a motion in there as well, with a motion, you're seconding?
I'll second.
Welling? Any discussion? There's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Comments from departments? Mr. Newsom, do you have anything more for us tonight, sir? Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. O'Neil?
None, Your Honor.
Mr. Pearson?
Sir.
Ms. Lim?
Ms. Cox?
Mr. Harris?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Public participation, is there anyone here that would like to address the council from the public for any reason?
Good evening, my name is Cindy Crawford, 193 Village Drive Alley. I just wanted to thank our firefighters with this horrendous mess in the mountains. I watch it every day. We're all hoping that we have the resources we, we need to put that thing out. This town is built on recreation and certain jewels. I know that, and we want to protect and preserve them as much as possible. I also want to thank our law enforcement for the work that they do and the loss that we recently, we all feel. I'm just here as a citizen to say thank you, and hopefully that we will get everything taken care of with no harm involved. That's all. Good night.
Thank you. If not, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Hey, Ken? Ken? Can, can I, got a question for you?